So no.
Okay. Great. Good evening. I called to order the meeting in the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee on Thursday, October 10th, 2024 at seven o'clock, and I will invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, miserable, liberty, justice for all.
Okay, good evening. As we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed by H.W. Cam. And, all right, we will start off with citizens' comments. In the citizens' comment period, any citizen who wishes to come before the committee should please, if you're here in the room, identify yourself and give your name and spell your last name so that we can get it correct for the minutes. And do we have anyone on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
No one on Zoom?
Just me.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak? Okay. All right, seeing none, I think we will go ahead and close citizens' comments at 7:02. Okay. Next up, we have a review of a portion of our school committee protocols. Julia.
As elected members of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to ensure that the students of the district receive the best education possible. To that end, we hereby commit to the following in the conduct of our business. Number four, school committee members will channel requests for information, reports, and data through the superintendent and the school committee chair rather than to staff. The superintendent will ensure that each member of the committee has equal access to this information in a timely manner. Recognizing the importance of proactive communication and avoiding surprises, school committee members will, whenever possible, contact the school committee chair and/or the superintendent in advance of a meeting if they have questions or concerns about an agenda item, or will ask the chair at least 48 hours prior to a meeting that an item be placed on an agenda.
Thank you, Julia. Thank you for willing to read the slightly blurry copy. I appreciate it. So next up on the agenda is a review of the school committee mission statement. You all, that is on there because that is sort of the normal course of events. I know that you all remember from last meeting, we discussed reviewing it, and it's actually listed again under new business, item E, to have a brief discussion about that mission statement. I guess my, I'll look to the committee whether you want to do it out of order because it's on the, here twice, or whether you want to just take it up under new business. Yeah, I mean, I guess part of, all right, seeing no enthusiasm either way, maybe we'll just go.
We can just do it now.
You want to do it? Okay, so I guess what I'll say is, without objection, I would just ask that we take this item to be reviewed now. Seeing no objection, I think we'll do that. So Eric has put the mission statement up on the board. It's also on your agenda. And so I will say that this, if you can scoot it down just a smidge, Eric, that this, what's presented before you is exactly the same as the mission statement that we adopted and read throughout the last year, with the exception of the first, it was the 2023-2024 school committee mission statement. And so I guess what we're just asking, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, and we discussed it briefly, and we agreed to bring it back so that people would have time if they wanted to make any comments about any other changes except for the updating of the year. And then separately, I did just want to get a little feedback on whether it's helpful or not to continue to remind us at the beginning of the meeting. That's something that we've done, but certainly isn't required. So I will just stop talking and see who has any, certainly one thing we could do, if someone wants to start us off with a motion, we could do that. Does anyone have a motion?
I move that we accept the 2024-2025 school committee mission statement as written and continue to read parts of it at every meeting. Second.
Okay, so that was second by Amy Kumberger. Discussion. Do you have thoughts?
Yeah, I just think it's too long, and it mixes outcomes with the means to achieve them. And I thought a great example is President Kennedy when he mentioned for the original moonshot, and his wording, it was very succinct, is that the mission statement was that, was to land a man on the moon and return him safely to the earth before the end of the decade. That was it. And I'm sorry.
So I'm going to just take a quick pause. H.W. Cam, so.
Mission statement, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm bad about that.
We're going to need David to speak, and Trent's microphone is not working.
That so.
Hold on, let me just get the microphone working there. Okay, we're troubleshooting over there.
I was just asking if you could speak into the microphone.
Okay, thank you.
Ironically, he was asking if you could speak.
I'm only too happy to, you may regret that, but.
It's like half on.
We're just going to take a technical difficulty. All right, Trent, wave your arms if you need to speak. And David, please speak in.
Yes, sorry. To recap, I was just saying that Kennedy was a good example of a succinct mission statement, which was outcome oriented, and the outcome was to have a moonshot, to land a man on the moon, and to return him safely to earth. It's nice. I thought the equivalent, and this is for what is a very rough idea, of a similar sort of approach for us would be our school committee's mission is to ensure our schools help to create graduates with a passion for lifelong learning, together with the critical skills needed to maximize their potential, something like that. But not getting into mixing in a bunch of means to that end, because that's really part of your goals, sorry, that's really part of your goals, and other activities to get to fulfill your mission. Anyway, it's a thought.
Other people have thoughts on that?
I like the mission statement as written because I think it takes into account the major areas of operations. So we've got something about the teachers, we've got something about the administrators, we've got something about our students, and we've got something about the community. And those are really the four areas that are integral to our group as a school committee. We have to be able to interact with all those groups to complete our goals. That's just me.
Yeah, I agree. I like having this document as sort of a guiding light when we're making decisions, to be able to look at it and say, you know, this decision meets that part of the mission statement. I like it.
I think we could combine the two, which wouldn't solve your issue, but I like your overarching goal, and then potentially we could just say, and we do that by X, Y, Z. So that way, I mean, we don't really read this at every meeting.
We read a portion of it, but again, that's a separate question. I mean, that was part of the motion that Jen made, but certainly, obviously, that could be teased out, like in other words.
So I mean, I don't have opposition to either way. I think both ways are great, but I think we could combine them.
I like that.
If David would be amenable to that, I don't know. Like, there's the North Star, and then there's the sort of ways that we do it. And I understand what you're saying, like, a mission statement is more the North Star, less the what we're doing, it's more the why, but.
David, would you be willing to read it again, just so that I can?
Oh, sure. Our school committee, committee's mission is to ensure our schools help to create graduates with a passion for lifelong learning, together with critical skills needed to maximize their potential.
So the one word I'm wondering about is help? Like, can you read it? Because I may be without the help. Read it one more time, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, our school, that's a fair comment. Our school committee's mission is to ensure our schools, if you left out help too, you could say, to ensure, to ensure our schools help, sorry, our schools create graduates with a passion for lifelong learning, together with the critical skills needed to maximize their potential. Yeah, you could drop the, to help.
I'm just, I mean, I'm just brain thinking about, like, if you're really a North Star, that help is sort of, right, like, we're, our North Star is not as strong as just saying.
Right, because like you said, with the JFK mission, it wasn't help him get to the moon, it was he will.
And it's shorter, which is good.
And it's shorter, which is what you're striving for, but so is there other discussion? Is there any, well, is there other discussion? I mean, I heard Julia, the motion on the table is to adopt the mission statement as written. I heard Julia expressing an idea of potentially keeping this. I'm wondering, Julia, if you were looking at it, would it be that that first line would be replaced with the entirety of what David just read?
Yes.
And then another line would be, we do that by, and then we'd have to change it.
Just to change the tenses.
Or guiding, we'd have to change it to action.
Attracting and retaining.
So.
I don't have a problem either way, but I think
Okay.
that could be one solution. But if people want to keep it the way it is, it's fine.
Thoughts? Other thoughts?
Do we want to do, like, a friendly amendment and vote on that?
You certainly can, if you want to.
Okay, I'll just throw this up there. I will make a friendly amendment to the motion to incorporate David's mission statement at the beginning.
That would be up to you, Jen.
Oh, I have to make the motion, sorry.
No, 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 just, she's asking.
I'm making a friendly amendment.
Bending your motion.
If it's okay with you, then.
Yeah.
And then, does it have to be seconded and then voted on?
I think so. Yeah, that sounds, so do we have a second for that friendly amendment?
Second.
Second by Trent. I guess what I would say, just as a, if, this is my two cents, is that if we were to vote for that, I guess what I would really like idea, and is only just to do that, get it written up, and then maybe put it on the consent agenda
Yes, yes.
next time, just because I want, just, I don't want to have the tenses be wrong or the.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So.
I always like seeing it in black and white first.
So I don't even know how we would word that, because if we vote on it, well, I think, I think it's been made clear that it needs to be brought back, or that it needs to be, I don't know. Somebody help me out on that.
Friendly amendment to the friendly amendment could be putting it on, putting it at the start of the mission statement with the caveat that we bring it back to the committee for full approval.
Sure.
Second.
Second by, that's a lot of amendments, but I think basically what we're, what we're looking at right now is adopting the first line of the mission statement to reflect the line that David Frankel read to us, and then adding, you know, this, something like, this will be done by, or by the following.
The committee will accomplish this.
By the following, and then correcting the tenses, and then we can just put that on the agenda for approval. And then it really will be, the committee would be looking at, typographical things and tenses, that sort of thing. All right, that was a lot. So that's what we're voting on. Does anyone have any other discussion? Part of the original motion was about, do we want to continue to read a portion of it?
Do we need to discuss that too?
Does anyone have anything to say about that?
I like it.
I like it too.
And this committee can always change it. You can, like, you can, you know, I'm happy to bring it back at another time and say, is this, okay. People clear on what we're voting on? That was a lot?
I think so.
Okay.
A quick question. Who is going to do the massaging of the wording? Was somebody assigned to do that?
Yeah, if you can send me that statement, I can, I can take care of it.
Yep, that's a great question, but we haven't actually voted yet, so, but yes. All right, all right, all those in favor? That is unanimous of the, what are we, six members present, and the motion passes. Thank you all for that good discussion. I appreciate that. That was, and so, yes, David, if you could send the wording to Eric, and we can just work that out, and then I, my intent is to put it on the consent agenda. It certainly can be, as always, you can always move it off the consent agenda into, if you have discussion later.
Okay.
Okay. All right, speaking of the consent agenda, does anyone have any items that they would like to hold? Okay, who's doing our honors this evening? Jen, thank you.
I move that we can accept the consent agenda as written. Second.
All right, so I don't know who said it first, but I'm giving it to Amy, second to Amy. All those in favor? That is unanimous of the members, the six members present, and the motion passes.
Thank you for all the donations.
Yes, I was going to just say.
Yes.
So much.
And exciting, exciting donations, fun donations, those are really fun.
Eric, can we make that just a little bigger?
The book.
Thank you.
Better?
Perfect.
Okay. Next up, we have an Ed Fund donation and discussion on naming. Eric, do you want to address that?
Sure. Thank you. As we discussed last meeting, we had come up with a little bit of a process to make sure we followed our policy that's in place and follow the steps of the policy. We've done that. We advertised these two, A and B, are both for the same thing. The donations were advertised Monday in an email to the community. People read it because I got phone calls, so it's, it was definitely out there. And then what we did was meet with each of the groups, solidify what they wanted to name, because of this process, if I can back up, this process began with the H.W.A.F.I.C. committee, who was the main private fundraiser for outside funds for the school facilities project up at the high school, middle school complex. The, they were linking sizable donations to the ability to choose to name some portion of the project that wasn't already named. Several of the things, like the track, for example, is already named. The press box was already named, so whatever was available, like boards and fields and stands, if you wanted to, but so these two donations, and we can do them one at a time, the first one is the Ed Fund donation. They donated to the fund, to the site, the project, a half a million dollars. And with the request to name the field, Ed Fund Field, I've talked to them a little bit about this and what that would look like. Each of the three fields at the high school have a scoreboard. This one would be specific to the main field. It would be on the bottom of the scoreboard, Ed Fund Field. The scoreboard is something that comes with the project as we're building anyway, so it would still say Hamilton Wenham Generals at the top, at the bottom would say Ed Fund Field. There's nothing on the field itself. So everybody's in agreement to that, and this is the MOU that our attorneys drew up for us to use in this process. And then Paul Mihalidis, he's the co-president, outgoing president, co-president, I think, but he, he was voted by the group to represent the Ed Fund in these conversations. And this is the final, the final document, if you will, that we would, if we accept the donation and accepting the MOU for the naming rights of the main field, which is the first field with the track around it, then, then we would sign this after that.
Okay. I think, I think it would be good to start us off with a motion for this, this one before we have discussion.
Didn't we have a specific wording that we had to use for this? I thought there was a slide. Am I not, am I misremembering?
No, not for this one, but your motion would want to say, accept the donation and the MOU for naming rights as presented.
I move that we accept the donation from the Ed Fund and the MOU for naming rights as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Amy Kumberger. So I don't, I did want to just add a couple of bits of information, I guess. Or maybe, maybe not, maybe you guys, discussion? Questions for the superintendent? Questions about, or any discussion?
Can I ask what the general tenor of the comments you received was? Was it positive or negative?
All positive, nothing, nothing negative. It was mostly because encapsulated, and that was also an update, and people were happy to have an update, but also excited that we were moving donations, which I think for them meant we were making progress, you know, we now have to pay for what we're doing, so.
Okay.
I am going to just, if nobody else is going to, I am just going to say a couple of things. I'm in support, but I'm just going to say a couple of things just so that the committee knows, and anyone who's listening knows. One, one important thing for, just for the future, is this MOU, just to be clear, does, under part three there, does reserve our right to, in the unlikely event that the name, the, it says, the benefactor or honoree's reputation changes substantially, so the continued use of the name may compromise the public trust or impairs the integrity of the district, da, 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 there's quite a bit there. You know, one can never foresee into the future. So just to be clear, this MOU is written in such a way so that if something ever were to really change, not that I have any reason to think that that would, but that we still would retain the right to, to do that. And I just feel like that's an important thing, because this is a really, naming something is a really big deal, and it's, I spent a lot of time looking at, like, our, I asked that I would have it in front of me, the naming facilities policy, and so, anyway, I just wanted to say that, because I was, I was concerned about it, and it was important to me. Anyway, does anyone else have anything else to say before we vote?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and it looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor? And that is unanimous of the six members present, and the motion passes.
Thank you to the Ed Fund.
Thank you very much.
Very much, yes.
Very generous donation.
Jen, can you have a similar motion for the next one?
Sure.
I move that we accept the donation and MOU as presented to the school committee for the Joseph Mar Tennis Courts.
Joseph Joe Mar Tennis Courts, in the amount of $250,000.
Second.
Second by Amy Kumberger. All right, questions? Discussion? Okay. All right, looks like we're ready to vote. All right, all those in favor? And that is unanimous of the six members present, and the motion passes.
Thank you again for the donation.
Thank you, Lisa Fall.
Yes.
Amazing.
Thank you.
Very generous donation.
That's very, very generous, and also very exciting to be moving these donations. And, and it's exciting to have some new names for some of the new things. That's fun. Lovely. All right. Next up, Superintendent Coles.
Thank you. So this is, we'll do it the same way, I think, if nobody has objections, do it the same way this year as we've done in previous, kind of open discussion, any thoughts or changes, I'll take back, and then we final vote on it next meeting. That's how we've done it for the past few years, so I figured if everybody's okay with that, we'll do that. My goals are made much more difficult because of the building projects. They really vacuum up a huge amount of time, how it's during the day, at night, in the morning, and this is con con meetings, and, you know, we're, we're, we're spending quite a bit of time on these projects, and we're excited about it. So I think last year I had five, this year I have four goals, and one of them is specific. It's actually linked to the second goal of managing these projects, these two projects through completion. The first goal is, we really need to develop an educational plan in sync with the movement of the possibility of a new Hamilton Wenham Elementary School. You know, we've been saying publicly that we're, we're gonna, you know, if we build this, this consolidated elementary school, then the Buca will become a pre-K kindergarten school, and what does that look like? How do we set it up? What's the design? You know, so we need to get much more in-depth in that, and it's going to take some time. And, you know, that'll, that'll probably also include some, a look at the facilities too, to see if we can truly meet the needs of the littlest learners and, in their day to day, and then also make sure we have enough space to do the things that we already have in our curriculum with the specialists that we already have in our curriculum. So we believe that shouldn't be a problem, but we want to now test it out and create an educational plan for the entire process, just like we did for the elementary school, like, look at music, look at art, look at all of the, the fundamental curriculum that are, that are built into those levels. They're slightly different with three and four-year-olds versus five-year-olds, but it's, it's a good opportunity for us to examine all of that in kind of one scope under, you know, certainly reaching out for assistance from Stacy and Director of Special Education, Student Services, reaching out to our preschool people to make sure we include them in that process. So it'll be a fairly lengthy process, and really have to be able to help people to understand what that, what that looks like before you get there. So, you know, we're, we have all this focus on the, this elementary school and moving all these kids there, but what about, you know, our younger learners who are the most vulnerable, I guess, at the point, at this, at that point in life. So this first goal is around developing that plan, working across the district, and kind of reaching out with our, with our current preschool program, which is somewhat grant funded, not completely, but we do have people who pay, and then we have some grant money. So we have to look at all of that and see what that looks like in a bigger scale. It may give us the possibility to be able to open up pre-K a little bit more and have more seats available at the school level so that pre-K just flows right into kindergarten. So those are all things we want to examine, and that's what this first goal really starts to get into, working through the process and developing that plan, so that by the time we get into the spring, we have that to lean on when people say, well, what happens with the Buca School? You know, so we can talk about the connections to the, to the regional agreement, the requirements and expectations of that, and then how we develop our educational plan is in connection with, you know, moving those kids from the, you know, kindergarten kids are all over the district, but the preschool are all at the Winthrop, so just, you know, consolidating that as well. So that's my. the Winthrop. So, just, you know, consolidating that as well. So, that's my first goal. Second goal is the construction projects. As you know, those, you know, this is my fourth night out this week, three of them for the construction project, for various boards and meetings, and, you know, trying to get people information that they need. So, this is really a continuing goal. I tweaked it to include the schematic design phase, which, as you know, last year we were working on feasibility. We moved out of feasibility into schematic design. We will submit on December 20th this schematic design package, which will go to the MSBA for review, and then throughout the spring, we'll move forward with, the MSBA, they'll go through the whole package, they'll review it with the state, and so there's a lot more work to be done. Then we'll also have to get an agreement in place to say, "If the voters agree to this, then this is what the state would take on." So, to have those pieces in place before we get to town meeting is gonna be super important, so that's part of that. And then the athletic facilities project is slated now. We're, it's supposed to end in July, we're ending early August now, and crossing our fingers for the weather, but, so that will, that will go out beyond this school year, so we continue to work on that. I spent my whole first two and a half hours of the morning today with it, and, you know, we meet at least once a week. So, we're using a lot of time there, so that's what that goal's all about. MTSS, as I've said since I started in this job, that will stay in place for five to seven years. This is probably the most important piece of what we've been building, trying to now move to the next iteration. As we move out of this year and into the next few years, we start to relook at interventions. You know, fewer kids should need intervention, so now what does it look like in phase three and phase four of that growth process? So, still working with the principals, still working with the Director of Teaching Learning, still working with the Director of Student Services to continue to grow that system. And again, now, it's, I think it's in an evolutionary phase. As we move through this year, we've added in our math curriculum. Our teachers have done a really good job at integrating our literacy curriculum, and are really comfortable in that in most places. Adding in the math program is a big, is a big deal for them to put on top of that. And then, you know, we'll go further with this to look at science, and then depending on where the state goes with social studies, social studies may be brought in. But we cover a lot of the social studies and some of the science stuff with our CKLA program in the knowledge section. So, and then a really interesting piece of, I guess it just needs to be updated. It's been a long time for this multi-hazard plan. We're supposed to submit them to the state every year, the same one gets submitted over and over and over. As I look at it, it covers everything. It covers, you know, something happens in the building, something happens outside of the building, something needs a police response, something needs a fire response, seizures in the building, pathogens in the building. So, it looks at all of that in one document. It talks about communication, inter-agency communication. So, we need to update it. We need to, we need to use it also at the same time to look at things like our own communication process in an emergency. If we have an issue in a, in a school where police, fire, and school personnel are in the same place, are we able to communicate? Now, we test that often. It does currently function well, but, you know, as, if anybody saw on Twitter today, the town of Hamilton has a, didn't realize this, a miniature town that they practice on. So, you know, those types of things are still available for us to work with. They train a couple times a year in our buildings. They're always in our buildings, walking through just to say hi to the kids. Anybody that's new comes through, gets the, you know, the tour over and over and over through the school year. So, we still want to keep those connections, but I also want to make sure that this response plan covers. There's one for each building. This could be even reunification. If we have to leave, say, the high school, I'll use that one, because I know that one the best, and you go to Pingree, what happens when you get to Pingree? When you bus all your high school kids, or all your high school, middle school kids over to Pingree, what happens? Where do they go? Once they're there, how do you figure out who's there, who's not? And then how do you reunify them with their parents without creating this gigantic scene? So, those are the, excuse me, important pieces of this kind of project, if you will. It has not been done in, I think, 12 or 14 years. It's time, and I think it'll take some time to get connections with, working with our school resource officer, working with the police and fire in both communities, talking with bus companies, looking at arrival times in an emergency, you know, 11 o'clock in the middle of the day, how fast can we get 10 buses to a particular site? So, really going through those processes. Do our communications work? Is our 911 process working in all the buildings? How do we know it? So, it'll just kind of be a comprehensive review of all the safety-related things in this multi-hazard plan. So, that's my fourth goal, and that'll, again, take much of the year. We submit them each year to the state on the 1st of September, and I believe next year will be due for an update anyway. I think it's next year, if not, it'll be the year after. But either way, it's time. We're kind of behind in updating that. And it has lists of who to call, when to call, how to get ahold of certain people across the community. So, important document.
All right. So, we'll just open it up to questions. Trent?
A couple comments. If I can get this to work, okay. I am always aware of the fact that when we number things, we are kind of imbuing them with a hierarchy. And I would advocate that Goal Three and Goal Four speak to every single person in the community, and Goal One and Goal Two, may or may not. So, I would just advocate that we move Goal Three and Goal Four up.
Oh, to one and two?
To one and two. Not to in any way decrease the importance of the work of one and two, but just because I think that we want to portray the, to the community that those two speak to every single student in the, in the school, right?
Yep. Makes sense.
Other questions?
Yeah. I don't have a problem with the goals, but I do feel that, from a priority point of view, we are not spending any attention on the current students, other than their sports facilities. Like, in terms of facilities, there's no, I forget, implementation, there's no planning budgetary estimates for what it takes, for instance, to have air conditioning in every classroom, in every room, or improved efficiency of heating in classrooms. And I think that's...
David, I'm sorry, I can't...
I'm sorry.
There's like a buzzing over here.
I'm feeling like I have to chew the mic. It's not...
Pretty much, basically, yes.
Yeah. I'm used to the more studio mics. Sorry. Yeah, no, I was just saying that I think the, while all of the goals are admirable, and the projects are admirable, I think it leaves a lot of students with, without being affected by anything other than the sports improvements. The, over at the old facility, I'm talking about the high school, the middle school, and Buca, and even for the students in the elementary schools that we're gonna combine, that's four years away. So, what are we doing for those, for all of the students, like, for the next four or five years, in terms of improving their learning environment? And so, we could consider options. I would like to see at least vendor budgetary bids, so that we can see, well, it costs $10 million to do that, not $150 million. And that's not to say that's an either-or, but we're not really being served up those kind of options. And I think that's, that means they'll never happen. And I think that would be, that would be a loss for the vast majority of our students.
Do we have projects on the books where we're looking to do that, or?
No, we don't. I think that's my point, really, is I think...
There's a capital plan, right, or?
Yeah. There's the odd bits and pieces, but there's not a, "Let's have everybody have air conditioning." That's 140 classrooms, plus five cafeterias, plus five libraries. Well, one library already has air conditioning, at least.
So, I guess, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounded like one, you're using air conditioning as an example, or something that you, or are you saying you would like air conditioning to be a goal?
Yeah, well, probably a makeover of HVAC. For example, if you put heat pumps in every classroom, that provides you both air conditioning and heat. And the heat is more energy efficient than, than the way we're heating them now. So, that would, that would have some financial benefits, but it would have, most importantly, it would provide a better comfort environment for, which is material to optimizing cognition and learning. And I just happen to be studying that part of the research, and it's significant, and its impact. Just keeping people within a narrow band of temperature makes a significant difference.
So, I'm gonna let Jen. I guess, for me personally, I, to me, that isn't really a superintendent goal. That would have, that would need to be a district goal. Like, I would have, I know this puts Eric in a difficult situation to have committee members saying different things, but for me, if Eric had come back and said, "As a superintendent goal, I want to put air conditioning in every classroom," and we hadn't discussed that as part of our district goals, I think I would have been a little bit...
I would have thought it could, could come from either direction, that if Eric felt it was a goal, he would presumably promote it to the school committee to make, want to get them to allocate funding for it.
I guess I'm just, I'm just saying, for me, that would have been something that I would have wanted if, to me, that sounds like more, and I'm not gonna, I'm gonna let other people talk. So, Jen?
So, when I first joined Capital Finance with Eric, I asked him, like, what other, I think, what other projects we were looking at, because we were looking at these big capital expenditures. And Eric showed me a pile of, like, proposals and projects that was probably eight to 10 inches tall. And those were a bunch of proposals and projects that we had hired companies and spent thousands of dollars to have them put together these proposals, and they're sitting on a desk. Or, in Eric's case, I think they were sitting on a bookcase. In terms of capital projects, I think we have a lot on our plate at the moment. And I would hesitate to add another large capital project onto our plate, because I think fiscally speaking, we don't have the, what's the word I'm looking for?
Bandwidth?
We don't have the money.
Full pocketbook.
I mean, to take on another capital project. So, asking Eric to put together a proposal for another capital project seems like we're going to spend money to have a proposal that sits on a desk for a long time. So, I would really like to think about getting the big capital projects that we have on the table closer to fruition before we add another one.
I also think that Goal Two covers what you're saying. So, if that capital project does come to fruition over the next year, it will be covered within Goal Two, which is already made, manage multiple buildings/construction projects throughout the school year. So, I think not putting a specific, you know, fifth goal regarding what you're talking about, I don't think that prevents that from happening. I think that would fall under Goal Two anyway. So, it's there.
Yeah, I know Trent's got something, too. Go ahead.
Do you want to go first?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. Just to, I think, I think I'm misunderstanding, and probably because I'm tired, and I apologize. I do, so what I heard you say, David, is that you don't see all the schools represented in Goal Two.
Correct.
And I guess the only, and then, Amy, I heard you say that you see the other schools potentially represented in Goal Two, if they arrive, if they come to that. And so, I think that a solution that might broaden Goal Two would be to have the preamble at the top be broader than the two projects on the table, for example. I know there's discussion about a roof at the high school, right, which is not represented in here. But it speaks to a huge constituency of people that have children at the high school that have had rain coming down into their classrooms, right? So, I don't know, David, would that get at least to, would that be a nod in the direction of where you're, where you're going with?
No, that, I think that would be a step in the right direction. I think, to clarify, I'm not saying add, add the, an actual project onto Eric's list, but to, and without spending money, get, get some of the major vendors in this place who would do this without charging, come in and provide budgetary kind of roundhouse numbers, so we could say, "This is not $150 million. This is maybe $10 million. And here's what you could get. This is what we, we, vendor X, would recommend in order to improve, improve the environments of all the schools." And it would be to just give us order of magnitude kind of, of ideas, whereas at the moment, we're very single-threaded through one idea, which is build a damn big school, period, really, and have a very fancy sportsplex. But we, we have no idea now, or in a year's time, or two or three years' time, if we wanted to stack up projects in a sensible order. We don't have the information which, to make that decision. We've been given one decision. It's a make or break decision. And I don't think that enables us to fulfill our, our role as fully as we could.
So, I, I'm gonna just respectfully say that I know that you have the best interest. I know that you care very much about the students. At the same time, I guess, me personally, to be clear, just because an individual school committee member wants to find out about a particular thing, doesn't, we can't, like, it needs to go through a process. We can't just say, "Well, we should have vendors evaluate any and all things that any school committee member wants us to look at." So, in other words, if I came up with something else that I thought was a great idea, and I thought, like, it needs to go through a process, and it, it does cost time and money to have vendors come in and give, in other words, you're sort of making a leap here, that like, that, that, I'm trying, I don't want to, I don't want to have a tense conversation, but I also want to be clear that, like, you're talking about providing air conditioning for every student, and that's not something that this committee has...
That's discussed, no.
...passed. And so, in other words, but I guess what I'm saying is, I could come in and say, "I want carpeting in every classroom, because I think it's really a good idea." But we haven't discussed that, and so, it's not really valid for me to say, "Well, why don't you just go out and get a quote, just to find out how much it would be?" Because...
Well, unfortunately, I was away for the offsite, so that would have been an opportunity to discuss it. But no, I agree. I certainly have no unilateral powers.
But it also looks like...
I'm sorry, I know, I stepped on Eric's toes.
No, it's okay. It's actually a solution to this.
Not great, okay.
That would have been one of my goals. It's, we, you approved last February, you approved the CIP Capital Improvement Planning Process.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Which is designed for that purpose, to be able to have people submit to the CIP Committee, which our new Director of Facilities would kind of take on. And they would coordinate along with the Capital Finance Subcommittee to figure out what moves forward, what doesn't move forward. So, we've already, we have a process in place. We've already voted for that process, so we can just kind of bring that back to everybody to say, "Here's what you voted for. Here's what we agreed to." And then...
And that would need to go through Cap, through Capital Finance.
Yeah, the way it's designed is the Capital Improvement Committee, which is a Subcommittee of Capital Finance, they would just gather the information, start to figure out ways to get pricing, bidding, whatever, where we can. Some of it we have to pay for, some of the groups will do for free. But gather some of the numbers, present those to the Capital and Finance Subcommittee, and then that committee would determine what goes forward to the committee for a pop... for a possible capital inclusion in next year's request for budget. Outside of the budget, it would have to be, you know, the capital requests are generally debt exclusion, so. Because they're, just because of their size, so they're not, they're outside of the school budget. So that process is already in place, so it's not necessarily something that we need to kind of bend into my goals. You could, but we already have a process, we could use that to do some of this work. And people can just say, oh, let's look at, you know, the high school roof was a good example, because we did submit an SOA in April. We'll hear about that in November, and if we get that, yes, we'll add that to the list. Because, actually, no, I think I have a new person who can do that now, so. Still getting his feet wet, but we're just trying to, you know, kind of take on some of these things as they come, because that roof comes to fruition, we gotta go to the taxpayers and say, okay, we need the money for the roof, even though the MSBA will cover some of that cost. We don't know what it would be if they even accept us, first of all, and then what the grant would be. Then we'd have to, so we have to contend with that next year, on top of a school and on top of the regular budget. So there is a process.
Well, thank you, Eric, for that. Is that, so can you just remind me, that would, just an individual member would go, would submit something? Or does it go first to Capital Finance?
So the way it's designed is that the facilitator of the CIP would create a form that would collect this data, so he'd send it out and collect this data. And then that person would coordinate it with the Capital Planning Committee, Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
All right, well, okay, that, there's more process there that I, we would need to make sure we understand, but thank you for that.
Yeah, we have it all, that's what I was just looking at. I knew we would approve something last year, but we do have a process.
All right, thank you for that.
Yeah, no, thank you, that would make me happy.
Yeah, that was helpful. Other questions or comments on the goals? Not surprisingly, I have something. So I just want, I have one quick question on Goal Number One, which I would, I would support what Trent said about rearranging them, though I don't actually see them as weighted, but I understand that it could be the appearance that they're weighted, and so I think that makes some sense. I just wondered about the, I liked this, I liked, that I liked very much that it's a philosophy, and it's really an opportunity to really create a vision and like a real, I mean, a true educational plan. Like, it's an opportunity to see this as, and so I guess what I wondered about is, at the top, it's called pre-K, K transition, but I didn't, I guess when I first read the heading, I sort of thought it was gonna be about, like, process for how to transition the kids into the new building. But that's, doesn't really sound like, I like, what I think it is, I like better, which is, which is really creating a deeper educational plan and philosophy for what it means to have the opportunity to have a pre-K and K building. So I guess I just wanna make sure I'm right about that, that that's more what it is.
We remove the word transition, it would be fine.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, because I, like I said, I kind of like that better, what I think you're really getting at. And then this, I actually already sent to Eric, and I would encourage other people to, but I just wanna say it, is that, this is really in the weeds, but on Goal Number Three on the MTSS, I got in there about the standards. Oh, and Eric and I, great minds think alike, I printed that out too. And I, I really looked at, he's got a couple there for Standard One, and I looked at Standard One, and I really felt like I would, for the MTSS, I really wanted to look at One A, which is about curriculum. And the reason that I put that to Eric is that, like, when I read what's exemplary, like, you know, what a level, what an exemplary of Standard One A would be, it just really seemed to me like that's really what I, part of what I was looking for in the MTSS. This is just me saying that, but it's, you know, about empowering administrators and staff to collaboratively plan, adapt, implement. And that's kind of what we're doing in these, this, all this new curriculum. And then continually monitoring and assessing progress, and providing additional supports as needed. So I made a recommendation that One A be in there, and then, so I don't know if other people have any other kinds of thoughts.
Yeah, I think it's a good, it's a good recommendation.
Can I look at the deliverables for that goal? I remember having a question about them.
MTSS?
Yeah.
Yep. Whoop, right here. See if I can fit them all, if I can fit them.
There aren't really, and this was my problem with this goal, is there weren't really quantifiable deliverables in there. It's more of a checkbox set of deliverables, and less of a report on monitoring the improvement or the quantifiable improvement that we've seen through the program. Which has always been something I've been interested in, like, is this working?
Yep. Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Maybe it could be something like, I don't know how often you collect the data.
Three times a year.
Yeah, so just three times a year, reporting to the school committee on the data?
I don't think you need to be three times a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd wanna see it progression.
Okay.
A year to see how the progress is going year to year. Because last year, when we got that presentation, I think that was the first year we saw, like, substantial. We always saw little bits of progress, but it almost seemed like we turned a corner last year.
Yeah.
And I just wanna keep an eye on.
And just to, back to sort of the indicators, I think that that indicator at the top, you've got Indicator E, First Data One, which is the data-informed decision-making. And a lot of that is getting at what you're talking about, and so.
Right, there just needs to be an action.
Right, like, so, like, a lot, like, the good part about that is, it's kind of a little bit baked into the goal that you're saying, you know, like, proficient for that is, you know, using multiple sources of evidence, including blah, blah, blah. So you're just kind of saying, maybe put that more concretely into the benchmarks.
That's all I was saying.
I can do that.
All right, anybody else have other thoughts on goals? Okay, so it sounds like, Eric, the plan is that you'll bring them back next time?
Yep.
And in the, you know, in between, I definitely encourage if you have, if people wanna just go directly to Eric in between, so that.
Feel free to send me what you have.
Okay. All right, next up is School Committee Meeting Schedule Change, is this you, Vinnie?
I can do this one.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do this one, Vinnie's got a few coming up. So we're building the year-long budget calendar. As you know, it's a full page, well, you'll see it in a little while. It's a full page of, you know, I don't know, 30 dates that we meet and work through the budget, and realize that the tentative vote, we need to shift it to January 2nd for it to be, to follow the regional agreement requirements of 30 days before the final vote. So we have to take the tentative vote on January 2nd, and then that leaves us that extra week after we, when we have to make the final vote. Doesn't, we usually, we have an extra meeting built in there, in case the final vote doesn't happen. But this helps us, if we move the January 9th meeting to January 2nd, move the 23rd to the 16th, it'll allow us to be on the budget cycle for the appropriate 30 days needed before the final budget vote, and gives us that extra week of cushion in case the final budget vote doesn't pass in this committee.
So I guess I'll just say that, to me, when I look at these two dates, the one that I'm concerned about is the January 2nd date. Because that means we would need to have a meeting. I want everyone to, like, look at your calendars, I, Eric and I can.
When does school start, though? Does it start the 2nd?
No.
No, that would be.
It's on Monday.
That was my concern as well, because we're doing knowledge tours.
So my, so one of the things that Eric and I talked about is, we certainly could, first of all, we can certainly ensure that that meeting is basically focused on the tentative budget, right? Secondly, we could have that meeting on Zoom.
That's what I was gonna ask for.
But it really will be important, I mean, it isn't a very important thing. So I, so I guess I just wanna put it out there that, you know, this is a tricky thing. I realize that that's a really difficult day, January 2nd is a tricky day. And I don't know whether the 16th poses any issues for people, but it doesn't seem like as problematic a day. So I don't know if there's thoughts, discussions?
I'm fine with it, I, it makes sense.
If we can do it on Zoom, I'm golden.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think originally, my original intention was, yeah, the 2nd's not a good day, and I moved it, but then that squeezed us for that extra week, just in case.
And the, right.
We should note, I mean, it is, it's the eighth day of Hanukkah. I'm not sure if anyone, if that affects anyone's calendar.
It's the, no, it's actually not, though, it's the.
That's what my calendar is saying to me.
I think the last night is the first on my, no?
Oh, I don't know.
First, yes, the first.
Yeah, the last, it's the night before.
Coincides with Christmas and New Year's, yeah.
Yeah, so it's the night before, so, yeah, so that, but thank you for being on that, but I don't think that that's.
Sound out on New Year's, I believe.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess we do, we probably do need to vote, because it is a change to the calendar. So we do need to vote on those two date changes. But I also really do wanna just hear if, like, if people feel like that's not doable, then like, let's come up with a solution. So it sounds to me like it looked like people thought Zoom would be a good idea, and probably lots of reminders.
And realistically, as people have been through the process, if you're in the process all the way up to that point, you have a pretty good handle of where we're at. And we still have time to make changes. So this is tentative, say here's about where we're gonna be at. And like last year, we chipped a few more things off, and then ended slightly lower, so.
And Eric, do you feel like that that meeting there wouldn't need to, you and I, I feel like we can make it so there's nothing else on that meeting except the tentative budget, Vinnie?
Yeah.
I'm gonna show you in a second, but the budget calendar does have some presentations that week, but I can, I can move those and have the budget holders come either before or after that meeting, so.
Oh, you mean not just you, not just you presenting?
Not just me at meeting, it is lined up for Student Services, Teaching and Learning to present, but we can, we can maneuver.
Yeah, we can move those around, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to be mindful of the reality of what this week is gonna look like for people in the.
We can pull those backwards.
Okay, and then, and then, and then that still allows us to have that, the as-needed, if-needed meeting on February 13th, which is a really important, just in case kind of a meeting. All right, Jen, do you think you can make a motion?
Sure. I move that we move the January 9th and January 23rd meeting dates to January 2nd and January 16th respectively, with the meeting on January 2nd being planned to be an online meeting via Zoom.
Second.
Second by Amy Comberger, is there any discussion? Okay, all right, all those in favor? That is unanimous of the six members present, and look forward to seeing you all right on that day, that would be great. All right. Thank you all. In 2025.
Vinnie has his budget beard going.
It's already started, it started already.
Okay, so I'm here to present our FY26 Budget Calendar. So tonight is kind of the first kickoff of the budget process. I hope all of you have got a chance to look at this. I do wanna point out a couple important dates to make sure you all have them on your calendar. Obviously, the most important one is February, sorry, I already lost it, February 6th, where we vote the final budget calendar, that is a supermajority, so it is important that everyone does come that day. Check your calendars.
So that's February?
6th.
6th.
I'll wait while you all check it.
Thanks, I'm good.
I'm good.
The normal time, right?
Yeah, it's just a normal meet, I mean, it's.
It's a normal, it's a normal meeting.
It's on the right, it's on the right day, but it is very important.
Yep, and in case, which we hope it don't, that the budget does not pass that day, we do have our backup date for the Thursday after that, the 13th. That would be an off-cycle week, but hopefully we don't need it. There are two, there are three others, but the two I'm gonna start with are the quintuple board meetings. For those of you who have done this before, that's the one in this room with somewhere between 30 and 40 people. It's the full committee of both towns, Boards of Selectmen, Anne Fincom, the Town Administrator Manager, the Finance Directors, all of us, and me and Eric. Those two, the first one is Wednesday, November 20th at 6:30. And the second one is January 15th, also at 6:30. And those are the all-member meetings. And then the last meeting I wanna point out, which is the one we just discussed, is the January 2nd.
December 20th is a Friday.
November, November.
November.
If I said December, I apologize.
No, I heard December. No, it's not you, it's me.
Yep, so Wednesday, November 20th, and then the other one, just to make sure I didn't mess it up, Wednesday, January 15th, both at 6:30. And then, like I was saying, and like we discussed, the other one is Thursday, January 2nd, where we vote on the tentative budget. So there are a lot of dates on here, but I just wanted to highlight four of the most important ones. Some of these not everyone has to be to. They are capital planning meetings, so not all members have to be there. But I would just recommend giving the list a quick read and make sure you know which one you're supposed to go to. Does anyone have any questions on the calendar? You can keep looking at your calendars to make sure it works. Everyone's okay with it?
Yes. Thank you for making this calendar, it's helpful.
I won't be able to make the November one, because I teach.
Quintuple. Honestly, as long as you have that final one on February.
I'm golden.
6th, that is the.
Well, for the, for the tentative, you need a supermajority also?
Not the tentative, just the final.
Okay.
Okay, everyone's good with that?
Oh, quick flash.
Yeah. So my next item on the agenda is a Student Activities Presentation. All the data you will see in here tonight is for the prior fiscal year, FY24, going from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. Just a little overview on the reconciliation process here. Our normal district reconciliation process compares our bank statements to our financial software, which is called Infinite Visions. This is just like normal balancing of a checkbook. You compare your bank statements to your ledger. However, when you apply this to student activities, it almost creates a little web effect, because we have a third platform that we use called QuickBooks. I'm sure everyone's familiar with it. So not only do we have to reconcile our bank statement to QuickBooks, but we also have to then reconcile the bank statement to Infinite Vision. but we also have to then reconcile the bank statement to Infinite Visions, and then Infinite Visions back to QuickBooks. So this is really three different hands in the pot here. Kevin, our district treasurer, handles the bank statements. I handle Infinite Visions, and the building principals slash administrative assistants handle QuickBooks in their ledger. So it's important that we're all in communication, and then we all document and record all the transactions timely cuz once one of us does not do that, it really creates a problem, and all of us have to gather in a room and tick and tie every single item, and it creates difficulties. But we don't have those difficulties right now. Everyone is recording everything correctly. I just wanted to display how the student activities accounts get a little confusing. So just a quick overview on the activity for fiscal '24. In total, throughout the five schools, the district spent approximately $219,000 within the five student activity accounts. As you would assume, the biggest one is at the high school, where they dispersed $184,000 themselves. Now, they are writing the checks and depositing the money at the school level, and that information is sent up to us. So they're the ones that are doing, most of this work is at the school level. At the end of FY24, we had a total balance of approximately $108,000, again with the high school representing the largest portion at $76,000. So every year, as part of the student activity process, I have to present to you our subsidiary accounts. So within the five student activity accounts, only the high school records this at a subsidiary account level, which means they break it out between every single club. The other four schools, it's really just one pot of money where everything goes in and everything comes out. Only at the high school do we segregate between clubs. So here, I broke out all of the detail in FY24, your beginning balances, your revenues, expenses, and your ending balance. Just one thing I wanted to point out, you can probably see on this chart, DECA is without a doubt our biggest club. They dispersed just under $100,000 in one year. You have a question? Sorry, you can ask.
Is this some mixture of high school and middle school? Cuz I thought the high school didn't have an LGB group.
They have an LGB, at Student Activities account, uh, club, sorry.
Okay.
Yep. This is just the high school right here.
Okay.
Yep. I was at DECA. So DECA is without a doubt the biggest club dispersing just under $100,000, and the second runner-up is the class of 2024 that had $30,000. So DECA is literally three times the size of the second-place club, and really does represent nearly half of all the activity that flows through our high school student activity account. This is just a continuation of the list cuz I didn't wanna put it all on one slide cuz it made it pretty small, but at the end of the day, you can see our final balance is just under $76,000. So tonight, really, all we are asking is for your approval to continue with these 29 clubs. If you compare it to the list before, we are not asking to continue with the prior classes cuz those have been closed out. But right now, we're just moving forward for FY25, requesting to continue to maintain this list of 29 clubs. That is it on student activities, unless you have a question?
I have just a quick question about.
Yep.
Oh, this is last year. Never mind. Yep. I was gonna say, why do we not have the, got it. Never mind. Do you have a question?
Go ahead.
Of course, yep.
What is not specific?
What is not specific? Occasionally, we will get a donation or a profit share on our pictures. That is an assigned to a specific club, so we put it in the not specific, not specified until the end of the fiscal year, and we then disperse that money amongst all clubs. So it's meant if there's not, if there's money that comes in that doesn't specifically belong to one club, that's the revenue part of it. The expenses is really two things, cost of QuickBooks and the cost of getting your actual checks from the bank. They probably spend maybe $30 a year on a, on a book of checks, so that's, instead of dispersing, you know, $1 to each club, we just put it there and put it against any miscellaneous revenue.
Julia, I was gonna say, would you do the honors of making the motion? Oh, hold on, nope.
Is a class missing?
No, that's what I was gonna say, but it's, it's not. I think.
Go, can you go back to the motion?
Yep. Did I miss a class?
So the motion is for the '24, '25 school year, which is this year. Class of '24 already graduated.
Oh, yeah.
'25, '26. Still have their money, though.
We, we.
But do we need to add the class of '24?
Oh, class of '28.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
They don't have any money yet.
Thank you for articulating that. I was trying to think of what I was trying to say, and then I was like, wait, but it's staying last year.
Yeah. In anticipation that they may raise some funds during their freshman year, the class of '28 would need an account, or we can come back and add it like we've done in the past.
Friendly, yes, class of '28 be added.
You wanna add it now?
Just gonna friendly amend it.
She hasn't even made the motion yet, so.
I didn't, you can say 30.
30 clubs, including the class of '28.
Okay.
I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee vote to approve the listed 29 high school subsidiary accounts for the 2024, 2025 school year with the addition of the class of '28.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Trent. Any further questions? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That is unanimous of the five members present, and the motion passes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
One more item. So the last item here tonight is approval for our prior year unpaid invoices. I'm gonna be completely honest, I hate presenting this to you right now. I really don't like that this happens. But occasionally, orders are placed throughout the schools, and a purchase order is not created. Now, I continuously talk to our budget holders and our curriculum directors and really try to work them to never place an order without creating a purchase order. But in these instances you see in front of you, that did not happen. I've had conversations with every single person on this list. In some circumstances, this is not the first time it has happened. In those instances, we have removed people's access to ordering things, in particularly staples. We have added a layer of security that those purchases now have to come through the business office before they are processed. At that point, we verify that they have actually created a purchase order before we place that order. Some vendors, there isn't that capability, though. With staples, there is, so we put it in place. But things like Salter Transportation, they don't have anything like that in place. So sometimes a purchase goes through without a, creating a purchase order, which isn't, not that they should hear me say this, but it isn't the worst thing if it's in the beginning of the year, but if you do this in May and June, right before I close the books, you don't have an opportunity to create the PO, and then I close the books, and you end up on this list. Now, I'm gonna be completely honest, I have one item on this list. In June, when I was covering for the Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operations, as well as the HR Director, I went to Winthrop School, and the custodians asked me for a supply order. I tried to complete that order immediately, called Next Generation, placed it, and said to myself, when I go back to the office, I'll create a PO. I didn't, and then in July, I received the invoice, so just being completely honest, it happens. I don't like that there's this many of them, and that it adds up to this amount. But again, we are all human, and we miss it occasionally, yes.
Sorry, question, is it now a digital workflow, or is it, you know, cuz you were converting some workflows from manual, multi-part stationary to, is this, is the order, and order approval placement now in a digital?
For some vendors are, but not, not for all of them cuz they don't have that capability. Like Salter, for instance, they don't have the capability to have it routed to the business office to verify that somebody at the school level created a purchase order. If a school calls, I'm using Salter as just the example, to say they need a bus, Salter just sends the bus. They don't call, they don't ask for a purchase order or verify anything. They send the bus and send us the invoice months later. Is that what you meant by it? Sorry.
Yeah, well.
I, cuz I was wondering whether you mean internally, are we, is it?
Our, our internal generation of PO versus the vendor. I mean, I just presumed that, that you either manually or digitally create it, and then by digital or by mail, send it.
It's all digital. It's all through the Infinite Vision software, so the school will, you know, make the request, the requisition, and gets routed up to me to review and approve the PO, create it. They then get notified that the PO has been created, and whoever created it then emails it off to the vendor. Not all vendors require a purchase order, though, before they place an order.
Your acquisition, it's just, it's basically a discipline issue?
And a overworked issue in some of the circumstance, but yes, it's the first one. So in total, I am asking for approval to pay just under $18,000 of prior year invoices with current-year funds. That means everyone's current-year budget will get hit for their individual purchase orders, and they will have to manage kind of that double year of expenses within that account for this fiscal year. Attached is also a copy of all the invoices and a brief explanation of what happened. In most cases, it's just ordered without creating a purchase order. If I can answer any questions if you have.
Okay, looks like we're ready for a motion, if you're. Did you write down a motion, or I just?
I didn't for that one, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee approve the prior year's invoices as presented.
Second.
Second by Amy Kumberger. Is there any further discussion? Right, all those in favor? That is unanimous of the five members present, and the motion passes.
Thank you, guys. Sorry again you even have to.
The list of shame, so we'll call it next year. I'm just kidding.
Thank you, Vinnie.
This is like my entire bank statement right there.
Have to walk around the cafeteria and follow him.
Expenses.
Okay, committee reports. Capital Finance?
I don't remember when we met. We did.
I think it was, was it Monday? Did you meet on Monday?
And then we have a lot of meetings scheduled, and we talked about the calendar that we just voted on the budget calendar.
We reviewed the FY24 closeout.
Yes.
For expenses, and then I went over the revenues as well. Planned out the budget calendar for the capital meetings, as well as the kind of quintuple board, and walked them through the final budget vote date, and how it has to be 45 days before the tentative, and then tentative 30 days before that, so.
Yes. Thank you.
September 23rd.
We have one meeting scheduled every month from now, I think until February or March.
Okay, and they're on the, are on that calendar that you listed? Yes. Thank you.
That's all I remember. And policy, I know that's me. I didn't bring my notes, so hopefully Amy can assist me, cuz Amy was the secretary.
Yeah, the update is the same from last week. We are planning on meeting on the 21st.
Excellent.
To work on the document the full committee asked us to create.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Negotiations, we will be giving an update in executive session, and our secretary is not here, so I don't think we have a secretary report. Anybody have any questions on any of the committee reports? Okay, to you, Eric.
Thank you, just a couple of things. It was exciting to see the Wenham Fire Department here. The other day, they came by with their fire safety trailer, their new one. It's an updated and upgraded one, so it was fun to see them. They pulled up in the back here, and kids in the Buick are in each grade, got to go out and.
And they all got a hat.
Learn about fire safety. You know, they have, when you go inside, they have a little seating area for all the kids, and, and then they have a little kitchen set up, so they, you know, okay, what do you see wrong with the stove? They put rags on the stove and things, and move the, the pot handles around, so that they have those discussions. And then the coolest feature is, they have like a mock room that they go into where, you know, they'll stop, drop, and roll, so they actually let simulated smoke come into the room, and, you know, they have to roll, go to the floor and roll, and then exit the trailer at the same time, and then they get to see the fire truck as they come out the exit door, they're right there. So it was, it was fun. The kids had a great time. They were very interested in, you know, going into the trailer and learning about, you know, what a smoke detector sounds like when it goes off, and, you know, it's just fun. But I appreciate the, it felt like the whole department was here. There were a lot of people from the fire department here from, from Wenham, and we really appreciate their assistance with that. It was, you know, it's, it's almost an entire morning for them, so. It was, it was a great opportunity, and we'll kind of roll that around to other schools, too, but.
I would say Colin came home and asked if the batteries are all working in our smoke detectors.
See that?
And I said, they will go off at 3:00 AM if they're not.
That little beep.
But he did ask, and I said, great, great, good. It was so random.
Right, right. What did you do today? And then, just a reminder for people, Monday, there is no school. Indigenous Peoples' Day, so there's no school next Monday. And then, kind of a sad note, I want to extend the district's thoughts and prayers to the Ipswich Schools, their community, and the family who lost a student this week in the senior class. Terrible event that occurred, and, and we, we actually had sent some councils over to help, help with that situation, but. Just felt, wanted to make sure we, we put that out there, that our thoughts and prayers are with the family and the community.
That's great that we sent resources over.
Yeah. It's the one good thing about all the superintendents here. You make a call, you get what you need. You know, we all, it's comforting to know.
It is, and we're little communities, and it's important. Does anybody have any questions for Eric?
No.
I don't have much on the chair's report. I do wanna, the only thing I do wanna highlight is, Amy had sent out a schedule to ask people to sign up to be available to provide information, public information regarding the school building project, and thus far. I'm the only person that signed up for anything. So I guess I'll take feedback if people are not feeling like, I'm, like I can make up all kinds of stories in my mind about what, like, what's going on, but if it's something other than just scheduling, if you want support about, like, how to talk about the project, or questions about, I know Julia did it. You stood with the architects and, and presented at one of the open houses. Winthrop, and I've done it a couple times, and for me, the more you do it, the better you get at it, and the more comfortable you get. It's true, like, people do ask similar questions over and over. You get really good at gesturing to where the board, like, what's really, what makes it easier for people to understand, like, which part of that board? And Eric put these at everybody's, or Janelle did, put these at everybody's. Did everybody get those, like, flyers for you to either, you know, hand out, bring if you're going to a meeting? It has a lot of also the information that you may need, and also, if you sign up for one of these things, you can bring these flyers and give them out to people. So, no, people, people don't need to say anything, but, like, I definitely encourage, it would, the more we get out there and ask, and engage with the community, we can hear what kinds of questions they're asking. And I think I shared, maybe at the last, maybe I shared at the last, that at the volunteer, I think I might have already shared this, but at the volunteer fair. but at the volunteer fair, I had, you know, one of the, one of the best conversations with someone. We were not, he and I were not on the same page about the project, but it was one of the most respectful conversations that I've really had on a difficult topic. And I, there was so much goodness that came out of that conversation. I had, you know, that's not an easy thing to do and I felt really good about both of us, like that we were able to have a really complex conversation about it. And I think it's really good to get out there and the more we can do it, the better and to have those kinds of conversations. So that's just my pitch.
Yeah, the question I have is, and to you and to Eric, is, you know, based on the outreach work you're getting, are you getting, and this is anecdotal, obviously, but are you getting a sense that, that you're changing hearts and minds, you know, from where we were? Are people dug in on their positions?
I think that's a fabulous question, actually. I, I like, I think that's really important. And I, it's totally anecdotal, but I definitely felt like there were several, many people that were genuinely curious and hadn't already dug in one way or the other. There certainly were people that were dug, that's real. But, but no, I think that's a great question and that did make me feel good. I did, I don't know what you. But I did feel like there were lots of people that were.
We talked to a lot of new families.
We, we had, yeah, we had a number of new families. We were able to give out, I think we, I forget how many, we gave out over 350 flyers. But we also had the same question multiple times at each of the open houses. Oh, is this that 3A thing?
Yes.
And it gave us the opportunity to say, no, here's what the difference is and here's the school project. So that was helpful because a number of people really thought the yellow signs all around town were related to the elementary school project.
And that, and I, in terms of changing hearts and minds, like that, I did feel like was able, like you could have a conversation and then people would walk away going, okay, I get it. That's a completely separate thing that like, you can be for or against 3A and that has nothing to do with whether you're for or against the school building project. They're separate. So I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, that was huge. That was huge because the first person that said it, said it to one of the architects and I just caught out of, and I, wait a minute. And then I listened a little more intently and they, they were very much of the, of the mindset that this was the 3A project that everybody was talking about, so.
So confusion.
It was a little helpful to, to talk to and it happened at each of the open houses. So that was good that we were there and, you know, again, these, these are the flyers we gave out. People were happy to have more information. They seem to be happy when I send out little updates and things. It's like, oh, okay, now I know where we're at. And then as we move into the project, schematic design, some three-dimensional and interior walkthroughs are gonna come about. So that'll help people to see what it looks like, give them the visuals, so.
Cool, thank you.
Can you pull up the spreadsheet again? And I apologize because I didn't even. The spreadsheet for the signups.
Oh.
We're still talking about that, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I apologize because I didn't even sign up for anything.
Well, now you did.
Now I did.
Now you did.
Well, I sat here. So some of these things are probably not conducive to having these kinds of conversations. Like I have personal experience with Halloween happenings at Winthrop, for example. It's a very loud event. It'd be really hard to have conversations. There's a DJ. And also this, anybody can add to this document. I just want to make sure, like I can take a look at it periodically to make sure we have what we need. But all of these events, we will need permission to table at, right, Eric?
I mean, if, if people are going, just let me know and I can just let the principal know that A, have the table ready and B, have the boards ready. There are boards at every school.
They're already there.
So, yep. I just need to know what you need.
And, I mean, I, I don't, yeah, so we, yeah, we'll need, and I, I see like Amy's got, which I think is really good. If, if, I mean, in our dreams, it would be two member, two school committee members. Because I think, first of all, you learn from each other. You learn from what the other person says. But also just it's great to connect with different segments of the community, like different people know. You know, different people, you have, it's.
Yeah. I was kind of looking for feedback, too, from people on the committee who's, who are members of other school communities. Like, would these be good? I just looked on the district calendar, but I don't know anything about some of these.
The Fun Run, I wonder, like I'm, I'm volunteering at the Fun Run, so I don't know if I can.
You're not running this year?
I'm gonna hand out, I don't know what they're gonna have me do, whistles, water bottles.
The Fun Run's hard because people are kind of all over the place.
Yeah, that's, I don't want to hand someone a paper when they're, when they're running.
Yeah.
No, again, I'm trying to think strategically, logistically about how.
Yeah.
How that would work. What do you think?
Same. Like I, I'll be at, my fifth grader is very excited about the high school open house for some reason. So we're gonna go to that. So there, I'm kind of in the same boat where some of these events I'm attending. They're in a different capacity, but I can definitely add more on here.
Yeah, no, I.
I think I can say, I, I mean, I will be in attendance at the Fun Run for sure. I don't know about the movie night, so I could put my name down as, like, I mean, as a representative. People know, people know who I am and they know who Eric.
Right. And I think that's the reality is that some.
They talk to us.
Right. Some things are gonna be more conducive to spending, like, in other words, that volunteer fair was a, people were hanging out and talking.
Yeah, and taking pamphlets and things like that.
But some of these are gonna be more like a quick grab a flyer and go. So.
Well, I'll take another look at it. Because I think it is important to have representation from the school committee.
And I think it's important to have a variety of representation. Like, in other words, you know, whatever, if someone, it's just, we all have, we all see different segments of the community. It's good to have a mixture. So, anyway, continue to sign up. Thank you very much for doing that, Amy. Would people need Amy to send that out again?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you send that out again? Okay.
I usually need 10 emails before I do something.
All right, topics for future meetings?
Sign up to table about.
Okay, and if there's nothing else, I'm gonna make a motion. Okay. I move to adjourn into executive session for purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the HWREA, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, and not to return to open session.
Second.
Second by Amy Kumberger. This is a roll call vote. Julia?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
David? Dana's a yes and we, that is unanimous of the five members present. We are adjourned into executive session.